Okay, I'd like to open the work session. We've got two subjects tonight, a presentation by PRISM and then boards and commissions and terms. So, Grant, you've got anything?
Sir Mayor, the purpose of the first work session is to provide you what has become your annual update on the work that we've done in response to the sewer consent order. PRISM is our contractor. Ellen's going to introduce the folks from PRISM. We're going to tell you what we did over the last year and then what we plan to do in the coming year and, to the extent that we can, forecast years beyond that. Ellen?
Hi. Well, we've got PRISM here tonight. This is Dave Reeves, who is going to make our presentation. The consent order, as I delve into it, is a very complicated issue. In order to kind of make sure everybody's on the same page, we need to have regional consensus. So, there are a lot of different technical issues. It's very complicated and I think PRISM's been doing a fantastic job. So, Dave Reeves.
All right, thanks. Good evening. How's everybody doing?
Good.
This is different. I said it was going to be on TV, so I got a little surprised before I got here today. So, made some slight changes to the presentation, mostly cosmetic, and added a slide, which I'll go over at the end, but other than that, it's essentially what you have. Does everybody have a copy?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to kind of go through it. We're going to talk about, as the city manager said, about the consent order that Pecosin and the rest of the region is currently under. Do I need to push something? Okay, we're going to talk about the consent order. Wow, that's pretty cool. Stereo now. Talk about the consent order with the Department of Environmental Quality as well as the EPA that the entire region is in. The purpose of this is to reduce overflows in the entire region, and we do that by reducing the amount of rainwater that gets in the system directly through an opening or indirectly through a crack or a broken pipe or something of that nature. All right. The process that we've sort of been going through over the last couple of years, and we'll delve into each one of these processes briefly here in a moment, data collection and flow monitoring, condition assessment, which is 95% complete, our SSES planning, which is sanitary sewer evaluation study, has been completed and approved by DEQ, hydraulic performance assessment of the city sewer model, rehabilitation planning, which is going to be next fiscal year, and a regional wet weather management plan that has to be developed by the region as well. So, let's delve into each one of those individually. Initially, the data collection and flow monitoring, we did a mapping back in 2007. That's a picture below of the GIS system, which is constantly being updated as we do TV work. We're adding laterals, cleanouts, and other information. So, while the mapping, the initial mapping is complete, it's an ongoing process to continue to add and improve on what we did initially. We did flow monitoring, which is basically designed to let us know when it rains what kind of extra water is coming in the system, and that was completed in September of 2008. We also concurrently did rainfall data collection and groundwater monitoring. Now, why is that important? When we have extra water in the system, we want to make sure that we understand, well, how much did it rain? And we want to know, well, was there a high tide? Because, as you all know here in Pecosin, that's just a minor detail that we need to be concerned with. Having all that information together allows us to put together a set of parameters that helps us to understand the impact of rainwater on the system for different types of rain events. So, I'm going to try to stay at 50,000 feet here and not get too detailed, but very important information in terms of meeting the consent order. And we also did this flow evaluation, which is exactly what I'm referring to, matching up the rain with the response that you had in the sewer system. And it can be quite dramatic depending on tidal conditions and the level of rain that we have. Okay? Currently, data collection and flow monitoring, we're continuing to do flow monitoring. Over the past year, we put in permanent flow meters at our five main pump stations, and we're also recording the levels. With that information, we're able to continuously gather data on what the flows are during rain events. We're also continuing to gather rain data, the same permanent mounted rain gauges that we set up at three stations, they're still there. And so, this allows us to continually evaluate the flow data that we get forever and ever. Why is this important? Well, number one, we have a baseline. Well, as we start to fix stuff, what changes? How does the flow reduce in terms of a rain event response? So, it's really important that we have this data so that we can measure the effectiveness of what it is we're doing with our rehab program. And at some point, hopefully, we'll see those numbers come down to a level that we can actually go, okay, we're in compliance with the order. Okay? Condition assessment, we run around and we looked at pump stations, 20 I pump stations throughout the city of Pecosin, checking the wet wells, the dimensions of the wet wells, pump performance, doing pump down tests, to make sure we had a good understanding of how each system operated so that when we went to do the model, what was in the field actually matched what was in the model. We did manhole inspections. Sounds a little funny, manholes are a great source of INI, and probably half of your manholes are brick. And brick manholes that have been around for a while have a propensity to leak and let a lot of water in. So, the manhole inspections were very revealing in terms of the condition of the sanitary sewer system. Pipeline inspections, they're 88% complete. There's about 120,000 feet of clay and what we call truss pipe in the system. A lot of the new areas that are PVC, we did not TV those. And the reason we didn't was because when we had the flow study done, the pump runtimes didn't really increase in those new areas like up on Hunts Neck Road, for example, in some of the newer neighborhoods. Pump runtimes were the same on a wet day as they were on a dry day. So, we made the decision, one, we could support through data analysis, that we didn't really need to TV those. So, we concentrated on the older areas that were within the city that had brick manholes and clay pipes and where the data that we had collected in 2008 indicated that we had a real problem. So, we're focusing the dollar spent on where we know the real problems are at. And then, smoke testing, which was required by DEQ, was to be 100% of the city. So, we've pretty much completed all of the smoke testing. We have one little area that we haven't done because we have some special considerations with citizens that we want to make sure we meet prior to doing that smoke testing. An elderly lady and a couple of the people had specific concerns about a smoke testing. So, we're working through that. Smoke testing is great because it lets you know if you have a direct connection with storm drain, if you have a cleanout that is open in a ditch, maybe, that's going to let a lot of tidal water in. So, it's an effective way to find some real quick problems that you might have in the city. And we found quite a few, so it was good to do. The SSES plan, which consent order deadline, implementing the plan is November of 2011. Installing man inserts, that is almost completely done. We got the last little batch in today, as a matter of fact. They'll be going in this week, and then we will have put inserts in every manhole. Why are inserts important? A lot of these manholes, as you may have noticed, have, number one, holes where you can lift them up, and they also have little holes in them just for venting. Well, those holes during flooding conditions will let a tremendous amount of water. Now, we're sensitive to the venting problem, so we're selecting certain manholes that are in less likely to flood for our venting. Otherwise, these inserts are really going to keep a lot of the water from getting directly in the system during a flooding event, which is really important. Smoke testing, as I said, is complete. We are almost done, 88% with the TV inspection of the clay pipe. That'll be done this summer more than likely, but it has to be done by November. We're doing manhole rehab work, so we're already out there cutting off sources where the water can get into these brick manholes. And obviously, as I mentioned, we're doing ongoing flow monitoring so that we can measure the success of our progress. Okay? The hydraulic performance assessment, we did the initial model, submitted that to DEQ. We've been working with HRSD and DEQ to make sure that we have done our part to give them the information they need to do their hydraulic model. In addition, we have to do a capacity assessment of the city of Pecosin internal system, and we're working on that right now. We have all the survey information. We have lots of great flow information, so we want to look at the impact of what's happening inside of the city of Pecosin system. And then, finally, the capacity assessment for locality and HRSD, the whole package, if you will, is due in July of 2012, just about a year from right now. Planning, well, why do we need to do planning, which is due November 2012? Well, we want to prevent sanitary sewer overflows. We want to identify, you know, localize significant defects like cleanouts that are open, manholes that are letting water in. And I'll give you some examples. That slide I added showed a couple of the things that we found, so I'll save that. If we reduce the amount of water that's coming in the system, well, when it rains, we're going to have a lower peak flow. We have a lower peak flow, less chance of it coming out into our local waterways, which is very important to everybody here, I know. We want to make sure that whatever we identify, that we are properly assessing the most effective way to eliminate INI and ensure long-term structural integrity to the repair that we make. Okay? And as we go through this, we'll identify, well, do we want to do grouting? Do we want to do cured-in-place? What methods do we want to use to reduce INI? As well as take care of what is, in some areas, a very old sanitary sewer system. It's getting to its lifetime cycle. So, you almost get a two-for-one here. I know we're under a consent order, but we also have some stuff out there that it has to be addressed anyway at some point. So, the timing in many ways is good for that. And obviously, we want to prioritize it. We want to do the things that we're going to get the most bang for our buck. Those things that are going to reduce the INI the greatest so that we can get below that peak threshold number that we're trying to achieve. Okay? I didn't think this, I didn't think I would go over 15 minutes, but it always seems to take longer, doesn't it? The regional wet weather management plan is due in November 2013, and this is a, we have to work this with HRSD and DEQ. And basically, what they want to look at is what is the impact on a two-year, a five-year, and a 10-year storm? And basically, for those of you who may not know what that means, a 10-year storm is a greater intensity storm. It happens, on average, once every 10 years, and it's a much bigger storm. And we've had quite a few 10-year events over the last couple of years. Imagine that, I know.
They're not even like this.
So, we're looking for something different. And also want to measure the impact in Pecosin of population in 2030. And Pecosin is, the population's not going to change so much with the limited area that you guys have, so that's not really a big impact for y'all. Level of service, they have not decided what the level of service is. And the level of service is, what rain event do we have to keep our flow below a certain level? Is it a two-year rain event? Is it a five-year rain event? Is it a 10-year rain event? That has not yet been decided, and that's an ongoing process that will unveil itself over the next year or two. So, we, yes ma'am?
I'm sorry, they being EPA?
EPA, DEQ, and the region. There's going to be some negotiation about that because there has to be a balance between, you can't, we can't design for everything because it just becomes cost prohibitive. So, there has to be some balance there, and obviously, our regulatory agencies are a player in that decision-making.
What are we designing to now?
Typically, most things are designed to a 10-year storm event. Yeah, most of your new subdivisions are designed to a 10-year event. Now, typically, you don't think of sewer as something you design because a new system doesn't have that. So, when I say a 10-year storm event, I'm mostly talking about storm drain. A new sanitary sewer system's going to be based on two and a half times your peak flow for just your regular sanitary sewer usage. So, it's very different. The 10-year service is different when you're dealing with an old sanitary sewer system where a certain amount of water is getting in the system. Because what happens is during, let's say, a 10-year event, your groundwater table may be a little bit higher because it's raining longer, the ground's going to be more saturated, you're going to have more localized flooding, which means your curb and gutters are going to have more water in them, and those little holes in the manholes are going to start taking on water. So, a 10-year rain event, there's a greater opportunity and a greater saturated condition for you to get water in the sanitary sewer system. And at the risk of, I don't want to get in, I want to stay at 50,000 feet, but, because there's a lot of detail that gets to deriving, yeah, we'd need another three or four hours.
We'd probably need months.
Yeah. So, we want to, part of this regional wet weather management plan is, is how do we deal with, how do we deal with this flow as a region? Do we increase the capacity in the system? We can reduce INI in the system. We can increase hydraulic capacity. We can increase storage. So, there's a variety of ways to do it. And as I mentioned to most of you last September, I believe what I would recommend to Pecosin is to take care of your own house and try to take care of your, what you can take care of, and stay out of the regional stuff as much as you can in terms of capacity and storage because then it's sort of out of your financial control in some respects. Well, let's talk a little bit about what we spent and what we're thinking about that the future's going to hold. Back in FY10, we spent $200,000 on putting the permanent flow monitoring that I mentioned, putting in a new SCADA system, which basically monitors the levels and collects that flow data for us and allows us to take it and manipulate it. And we also did some TV inspection work. This year's been a big year, done almost 100,000 feet of TV in, got all our smoke testing done, got all our inserts in. Okay, we've gone to meetings ad nauseam, just, there's meetings every, like, twice a week. I mean, there's a lot of meetings and a lot of stuff to go to in order for us to stay up with what the region's doing because it's a very dynamic process, and we need to be at the table to properly represent the city of Pecosin. The anticipated costs for this year are almost half a million, and we're right on, right on with getting that work completed as of this week. The future, well, we've already got a budget, as you guys know, for next year of 200,000, so we're going to continue to eliminate INI. We're going to put our rehab plan together, and we're going to continue to work on the model and the reports and those requirements that are in the consent order. Future years, we want to continue to eliminate the inflow and infiltration that's in the manholes. We had mentioned last time cured-in-place, okay, about 3.4 or 5 million to do 115,000 feet of clay pipe that's in the city. And that's all the clay pipe in the city. Okay? The rehabilitation of 2,400 public laterals, it's about $12 million. It's about $5,000 per lateral. Now, let me stop here. This is a high-end number. This is a worst-case scenario. This is if we do every clay and old lateral in the city and we do every clay pipe mainline in the city. Okay? Because we're responsible for everything that's in the public right-of-way, not on the private side. And that's the first step in this whole process. So, the number that's presented here tonight is to give you a real understanding of what the potential cost could be in the future. Our job is to do a better job of honing that down and having a good understanding of how we can get the most for our dollars in terms of executing this work and getting below that flow number based on the level of service that is decided.
What is a public lateral?
Public lateral is what comes from your house and comes out your toilet, goes right out into the main line. Where it gets to the right-of-way line, where the city owns the road, that's the public side.
Okay.
The private side, which is a whole nother issue right now that's being discussed, and HRSD is involved in potentially dealing with that, as you may know. But the cities are ultimately going to have to deal with it. And the difficult part, in all honesty, about this particular type of rehab is that water will find a way to get to the next weakest point. So, with a groundwater table like Pecosin, which is on up there, every lateral is quite exposed to groundwater. And if it's defective, that's where the water's going to go. And so, when you fix the main line, you fix the manholes, great, they'll still go in the main lines and laterals. You fix the main lines, they'll still go in the laterals. You fix the laterals, it's still going to go to the private side. At some point, depending on the groundwater elevation, though, which varies and from area to area, you're going to get improvement. Yes, sir?
No, I'm listening.
Okay.
I'm learning.
When you say cured-in-place, I take it you're talking about slip lining?
It's very similar to slip lining, slightly different, but pretty much essentially the same. Yes, sir. And that's a full structural rehab. That's that two-for-one that I mentioned earlier, which is so important, and I don't want to minimize that in any way because the reality of it is, is there's going to be needed rehabilitation of lines over the course of the next 10 to 20 years, irregardless of this consent order. And that'll be reflected in ongoing maintenance and things like that that would continue to increase. We also may have to upgrade some pump stations depending on how we work with the region to deliver flow downstream, but currently, our preference would be to try to avoid something like that.
The cured-in-place process?
Yes, sir.
Is that a permanent fix or is it at least as permanent as something to be or is it a variable?
It is a 50-year fix, and it's designed to be its own pipe, and you can design it in a fully deteriorated condition, which means that the existing pipe is not considered in the design of the liner. So, it stands by itself as a fully structurally sound pipe, absolutely. And it's a very cost-effective way of taking care of things. There's also, you can rehab the laterals from inside the pipe, too. And that process is not, it's expensive, and that's where that number comes from. But it's not any more expensive than digging it up and disrupting the road and having to deal with resettling patches and all the things that we all know about. So, this is the slide I added. I just wanted to talk to you about just a few of the things that we found because I think it's important to note. One of the wet wells, pump station 12, had a huge leak in it. Right where the main gravity pipe comes in, it was gushing a whole lot of water. I can't even, I'm sorry, 12 is off of, what's that road? Odd Road, is it Odd Road? Cedar Road. It's all the way down Cedar Road and then make a left back there.
Okay.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. Boy, you almost got me. A lot of water was coming in there. Open and broken cleanouts. We found, through our smoke testing, cleanouts, which are those areas where you clean the public side, they're wide open, sitting in a ditch. So, every time you guys get a high tide, that's a four-inch, you know, pipe just letting as much water as the seal put into it. We had broken laterals over off of Messick Road where the lateral was actually broken, and Bob Speechley can tell you that every time the tide would come up, the level would come up in the pump station because all of that water was pouring into that lateral. So, we found several of those, several cleanouts, and those things are what I like to call big hitters because that's just, that's twice a day. Every day, you're getting a lot of water. And then, we've repaired four main lines where either, for example, BNG or Vetco or someone like that that was working for them actually bored a line through the sewer line. And when you do that, you've got a big hole, and a big hole lets water in. So, those are just some of the things that we've found.
Have all these been fixed?
Actually, we have fixed three of the four main lines. The other one will be fixed today. The broken laterals have been fixed, and the open cleanouts have been fixed and the wet well. Yes, they have. The only thing that hasn't been done, and it'll be done within two days, is the one on White Cove, I believe, that has to be done.
Now, are you looking at the private systems that are in easements?
We're not looking at the private system, no. And I'm thinking, you're thinking apartments and places like that?
Well, we've got several subdivisions where we didn't extend the sewer, and they have grinder pumps on a common main.
Okay. Like Lawson Street? Is it South Lawson?
Barber Lane is one of them.
Okay.
Hunt Drive, got the grinders.
Yeah, there's several of them.
Okay. If they're private, we have not looked at them because the city doesn't own them, but that is certainly a consideration, especially in those areas where we have found that there is high levels of INI, that we need to maybe take a further step with that.
Even though you have to look at those systems, do you look at the amount of flow that's coming from those systems?
Yes, we do. Absolutely. Yes, we do. We were able to see from every pump station, just through runtimes, which was not a legal method to the consent order for viewing the amount of INI, but you can tell a lot by how much more a pump runs on a wet day than it does a dry day. It's pretty revealing in a very simplistic way. So, yes. And I could point a couple of areas out, but I won't.
Your repairs up there, are they included in the $499,362.16?
Yes, they are. Now, the first one is, the Pecosin took care of the cleanouts and the broken laterals. We took care of the wet well, and we're taking care of the main lines, which is actually a separate thing because we're charging that back, the city's charging that back to the utility that broke it. So, that's not in there. So, the only one that we did that we actually added towards that 500,000 was the first one. Yes, sir? And City of Pecosin Public Works Group, Bob Speechley and his group, extremely responsive, great to work with. They've been right out there with us when things needed to be fixed and have taken care of them right away, and they're, helps us, too, to keep everything organized. So, we certainly appreciate working with those guys and with you folks as well. Okay, other questions?
Just one, you said that you're plugging a lot of manholes, the covers?
We are actually putting an insert. It's like a dish. It's like, it's sort of like a satellite dish with an edge on it so it'll sit in the manhole. And you put that dish in there, and what little bit of water gets in the holes of the manhole, it just gets contained in that dish. And whenever someone opens that manhole up during a dry day or whatever, that little bit of water will go in, but it's not, that's insignificant.
The ones that are in high flooding areas?
Yeah, yes.
Are left alone?
No, we're putting them in every manhole.
Every one?
Yes, sir. It was over 1,000 of them. It's going to make a big difference.
And where do you vent the system now that you get these in?
Well, we're working with Bob to make sure that we pick areas that aren't susceptible to flooding, but we want to make sure that we vent the system properly. And Bob knows those areas where that's a particular problem.
Okay.
So, we're sensitive to making sure that we vent it properly. Yes, sir?
Are these future-year estimates, the 70 manholes, the 115,000 linear feet of sewer lines, the rehab of the 2,400 laterals, is that something that we do over time? Is that something that we do in a two-year period? Is that something, I mean, those are pretty big dollars there.
Yes.
So, the big concern is, how long is future years defined as?
And we, that is still under discussion at the regional level as to what is going to be an acceptable period of time. I mean, I'm certainly hoping a number like 20 or 25 years or more comes out of it. You'll have forces out there that want it to be a lot shorter, and you can probably figure out who those forces are. So, that is yet to be decided. I will say that I would strongly recommend that you, when possible, to go ahead and start the rehab of your main lines for a number of reasons. Number one, you get that cycle of spreading those costs out a little bit sooner, as you suggest. And then, number two, as the region unfolds their plan and the level of work that needs to get done goes up, the demand is going to go up and the price is going to go up. That's my opinion, that's just basic economics. And so, anything you can do in the next three to five years before this thing really, really starts to kick in and the entire region is all under the same timetable to get these things done, I think it's going to be to your benefit, frankly. Because right now, prices are good, people are hungry, cured-in-place is going for about $25 a foot on an eight-inch line. You can't dig it up for that, definitely not in Pecosin because it's too wet. So, our recommendation is certainly to consider moving forward with, you know, some expenditures towards that as soon as you can because it's going to save you money in the long run.
Are these out-year costs associated in any way with the TMDL problems?
We're working on that. The short answer is, right now, the EPA is saying that the work we're doing for the consent order does not help us meet the Bay requirement. However, last week, I was at a meeting, and someone from DEQ mentioned that compliance with the consent order had been written into another permit. So, we've just gained a new argument to get EPA to reconsider. So, just like that level of service determination, that's one of those things that's under consideration. What it does help us do is we also have a bacterial impairment on our waters. And because of that, our stormwater permit, which is a different entity than the Bay program, we get credit for complying with the consent order there to eliminate bacteria in the water.
The more we reduce INI, the greater percentage, does that give us a better bargaining chip on the length of time that you may have to do some of this rehab work?
It's an interesting question. I- I don't know that I can give you a real solid answer on that right now. I have a feeling that, you know, when the EPA says you have 20 years, I don't know that they'll necessarily care what your in-between is. I think the good thing is, is if we take the right approach, the hope is, is that we can get below those threshold numbers, which have yet to be decided, with minimal amount of effort. But it's the kind of thing, and that's why we want to give you the worst-case scenario because I, we all know how water works and it's going to find its way in and we're going to take the most solid approach to reduce the most INI and then go from there.
Well, the reason I'm asking the price about the future years is I agree with, with your logic here that we need to go ahead and get going, you know, so we can start doing a division. I guess what I'm hearing is that the decision will be made where? At the, as far as the EPA? Or will it be made by DEQ? Will it be made at the HRPDC?
I think that the region has a play in this. And Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, the EPA and the DEQ, along with HRSD and the region are all partners in that decision. And, you know, the DEQ is reporting to the EPA and HRSD is working with the DEQ and EPA and we're working with the DEQ and HRSD. So the hope is that, that we'll all be players, we should be players in making that decision.
Do we have a timeline for that decision?
Is it two years, a couple of years before the level of service is decided?
The level of service would be two years when the regional weather management plan...
Okay.
So we won't have that final decision for two years, right?
I attended a meeting recently when the people from the region were negotiating with people from the DEQ concerning the business rules, which is the agreement where, that explains how all the localities are going to work together and also talks about the, kind of the program management approach they're taking. And there's, there's a little bit uncertainty even as to how, whether or not they're going to buy into the, the business rules that the region came up with. And the interesting thing that, about that is they're kind of taking the same program management approach that the EPA is taking on other programs. And what they're doing is they're trying to say, okay, the end goal is what we're going to focus on. We're going to get to this certain level regardless of whether it takes more or less work. We're going to monitor, when we're at that level, we're going to stop working. The thinking is, we don't continue on and also the EPA doesn't come back and issue another consent or another dictate on the localities, which is what they've done in other regions, I believe.
I'm not sure.
They've come back, I think right now we're under a phase one and two order and they've come back to other areas and said, okay, you've completed all the work you said you'd do for this, now we're going to make you do a phase three because the water's not clean enough yet. So since the region is focusing on the end goal in the hopes that they don't come back later and say, okay, you've spent all this money but you need to do more.
What is this, you know, these, these costs here in the future years as compared to, you know, sewer and Hunts Neck Road, you know, the last phase that we put in? And what are we talking about in comparison between putting in a whole new system and these repairs across the whole city, if you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to get a basis of how much this is going to cost by the year or whatever.
I can look up what we spent on a section of sewer. We can look up in, in the records and get, and bring it up to current year so you have an apples-to-apples comparison.
I would say it's less. I would say that the rehab schedule is actually less.
I would think so.
Because of the in-ground, view construction, high-ground water table, pavement, new laterals, curb and gutter being messed, the whole nine yards, yeah.
So basically, to go back through and kind of revitalize our system or overhaul it, you know, would be less than putting in basically a new phase.
I don't think there's any question about that because there's no way you can dig up a 15-foot sewer line for $25 a foot.
Agreed.
Yeah, it's not going to happen. Maybe about five times that.
So...
Yeah, exactly.
So how much money in the sewer fund goes to perpetual maintenance today?
Perpetual maintenance?
And you don't have to have the answer off the top of your head, but to me, it's kind of like, you know, are we in the ballpark with perpetual maintenance if we started to say, pick off areas?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
I believe it's safe to say that our fund has carried a balance and you've been expending that balance purposely on these types of things. That's where you got the money for this year, it's where you got the money for next year. And for all intents and purposes, in FY13, you're out of that excess. And the amount of money that's coming to the fund is roughly equivalent to our obligations for debt service and operations and basic maintenance. You don't have a fund structure that brings you money to attack this. And it's good that we're talking about this today and it's good that we're talking about budget next month because this is one of those things that is staring us in the face. We'll need to begin to figure out how much of this we're going to take on at a time and what we're willing to do in order to make that happen. And your options are essentially borrow it, which has its own pros and cons, or up your revenue stream and simply cash fund it. Both of them require a change to some revenue stream, whether it's a tax or a fee, because right now, none of this is supported at scale anyway.
And that's the reason I wanted to ask the questions is because next, next week at the, at the budget offsite, then maybe we can have some concept of where we are on debt service as it applies to the city sewer, where that might fall off, where our opportunities, just like we do, when we do a city budget across the board, you know, do we have opportunities there to level load or, you know, take on debt and when would that occur?
All of the debt that you have so far, correct me if I get any of this wrong, is general obligation debt. You, the city has not chosen to issue revenue bonds, so it's all in the same grouping. And in fact, all of the things that you have done over the past several years to level your debt and to refinance have also included your sewer bonds, which were in fact, general obligation bonds for sewer. So I'm doing this from memory, but I believe from your last CIP presentation, you have about $11 million worth of debt capacity, which is not payment capacity, but debt capacity, room on the credit card over the next five fiscal years. And that's not necessarily linear, but overlooking at its five-year, you've got a middle school, which will exceed that in and of itself, TMDL, which will exceed that even in a good scenario by a factor of two to three, and then you have this. And so one option that you have, which you haven't, we haven't used as a city yet, but you could, is to actually issue revenue bonds. Issue revenue bonds with a dedicated revenue stream, which is not a general fund revenue stream, but in fact, the fees that we charge. And issuing itself a revenue bond actually takes that bond outside of your general obligation debt load. But in order to do that, you have to have a separate fund and you have to have a fee structure, separate from the general tax structure, which is fully sufficient to cover the debt obligation. So you do have another option here, which, but we haven't used it yet.
I guess to have a swag, a chance at putting a swag together on this, do you think we could take these estimated costs, which are, worst case, clearly heard that, and put them in five-year, 10-year, 15-year, 20-year buckets? Okay?
Absolutely.
And then we can see what the results of those would be and then maybe we can push back through, through letters and the like to HR, to the EPA and say, if we can do this in this amount of timeframe, we can do this without major impact.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? Counselor?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, the next part of the work session is devoted to boards and commissions and something that council's talked about for a long time where we're at a, a time when lots of people are, I guess more people are volunteering to be on boards. It's probably a good problem to have, but we've got some, some stuff in place where we lock down boards and we don't lock down others. And so we wanted to have a conversation amongst council as to what we wanted to see the future of boards and commissions to be. And I guess, did Judy do some background on this or what do you want to do?
What you have here, and Judy will go over it in a minute, beyond the cover page from, from me, is a two-page summary which lists all of your committees and commissions, its mission, how many members it has, anything special relating to that one. And she'll go over that in a minute. And then there's backup information at great length for each one of those that she put together. You know, as I've been here for two years, members have discussed at different times concepts pertaining to, should we have term limits for those that we can have term limits for? And you can't have term limits for some, and that's in the summary. Should there be a, a requirement for a rotating chairmanship where the chairmanship is something that is under your general control? For example, the school board would not be, but, you know, the library board would be. And you've discussed this a couple of times this year, should there be changes or a new process relating to how candidates are in fact selected and appointed? There may be other issues, but those are the ones that we heard you talk about. And Mr. Mayor, without objection, maybe Judy could hit the highlights of what she's compiled and we'll await your direction.
No, there, is there anything else that, that we wanted to address? I think, it sounds like what we've talked about. Okay, so Judy, go right ahead.
All right. What you have before you are our major boards and commissions and ones that really make the decisions, such as the planning commission, wetlands board. And what we provided was what the mission of each of the boards were, what the source of that mission, where it came from, whether it came from the city code or where it came from the zoning ordinance. We tried to specify that. It shows you the number of appointees to each board and you'll notice some of your boards have more members than others and some have alternates. And generally where you have alternates, those alternates are allowed by the city code or state code that you can have alternate members. So there, that is a selection, a choice of yours. Some are by precinct, some are not. The ones that are by precinct makes it a little more difficult for you to make selections, but it's required in some instances by the state code. So it gives a more rounded board where you have members in different areas of the city, like on your wetlands board is not by precinct. And you find that the majority of the members on the wetland board are from one precinct, maybe from one area, so therefore the whole city is not represented on that board. There are term limits for some boards and no term limits for others. What you have on some of your bigger boards are that members are on there for a lifetime. They're on for, they get on there and they enjoy serving in that capacity and they do an outstanding job, but they're on there for 10, 15, 20 years because they don't want to resign and you don't want to replace them. And then the boards get in the rut when they have members that are on there all the time and they have no formal structure among themselves, there's no rotation of chairman on there. So you have the same point of view sitting on the main chair that's guiding most of the discussions on these boards and commissions. And some of your, some of your boards have chosen to make up their own rules and regulations and they automatically rotate that. And I think those that do the rotations find that to be very helpful because you have different perspectives. Most of your boards do not require training. I think your Board of Zoning has some training, the planning commission does, but your other boards, most, a lot of your appointees are, are just people that have expressed an interest to serve. They have never served in that, on any city board at all. And so they spend their, probably the first year on that board just as a learning process. So one of the things that you have expressed in the past is trying to get candidates that have the qualifications that you need on these boards, but how do we go about getting that information for you all to make that decision? Our board bank applications right now just ask for them to express their interest and that's how we present them to you, is that they have an interest in serving and they'll give you their education and some of their background. And you're very limited in your choices because you have very few people who do apply for the specific boards that you, that we're looking for. Now, every time we have a vacancy, we do advertise that vacancy and try to get board bank applicants. And it just depends on the board whether we get any. Like if you didn't get any this time, that's not to say, if it was extended, that between the next month, we'd get five or six candidates, but it's very hard to get the candidates. And you're pushing it at the meetings for people to participate, has brought forth some very, very good candidates that they're applying not for any opening that we currently have, they're just coming forward to say for future consideration if you have a vacancy. That's proved very beneficial to you. And also when you have had interviews for some of your boards and the candidates were not selected and you explain to them how they could be of service to the city with their qualifications, we've had some of those that have come in in the last couple of months. So some of the things that you've been doing is helping to get more qualified candidates for when we have some of these openings. So I guess it's something you need to give us some direction on what you foresee doing with, with the boards.
I have a quick question. Did I hear that our city bylaws affect what we can and can't name?
Some of the, like the planning commission, your ARB and some of those boards are actually structured by your city code, Board of Zoning Appeals. Our city code tells you how many appointees you can have on there. And that's based a lot of times on what the state code allows us to do as well. But like your library board, some of your other boards, there's nothing even in the city code that structures that. Parks and Recreation has their own bylaws and they determined with council approval how many members they wanted on that board and how they wanted that representation distributed. And so they have a lot more by precinct in that large than any other board.
Judy, I see that a number of them have a certain number of years for terms. Only two of the boards or commissions have term, term limits as far as the number of terms you're concerned.
Right.
On the ones that are sourced by state code, okay, is the number of year term and the fact that there's no limit on the number of terms, is that determined by the state?
The state does do the one on the school board and I'm looking for the other one that has the term limit.
The school board?
The architectural review board, that's in our city code, but when we structured that organization in our city code, we followed the guidelines of the state code. So, you know, I'm not clear on that right now, but I do know that it is in our city code.
I think, Mr. Southhoff, I understood your, the other part of your question, there are boards that don't have limits.
Right.
If the state code doesn't say there are limits, these are still positions which are subject to reappointment. You reappoint people. You can make a decision as a council that you don't want to appoint any individual beyond two terms. That would not be at variance with the state code because you have the ability each four years or three years to make the appointment. You can restrict that, you just can't do more than what the state code would allow.
My concern is if we start putting limits on all the boards, you know, over the years that I've been on council, I've seen every board have a problem with applications, every one of them. And if we make it mandatory that you can only serve two terms and then there's no applications, what do we do? We're stuck. And you don't want boards that have an even number in case there's a contentious item you're going to have to tie or the possibility of a tie. So I think... So I think maybe that our focus ought to be, if we see that there's been a particular person, no matter how good they are, that's been on there forever and ever and ever, and we've got several applications, that we need to do a better job of saying, okay, it's time for some fresh blood. I think if we, if we make it a part of the makeup of that, if we make a rule that they cannot serve any more terms, I'm afraid we're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot getting people on that, on those particular boards.
I have a similar concern with you, and my solution for solving that is possibly just to say, two consecutive terms. But then, and then rotate off, to let somebody, somebody else come in, and then you can get back on again if you want. Because I think there is value in people who have, you know, the experience, but I also think it's important to bring in fresh faces, and I, I have, we haven't had the problems since I've been here about getting people on. There've been some times when we didn't have applicants, but when we worked to go get applicants, it was never really a problem.
The biggest problems that I've seen so far are in areas where they're from districts, okay? You have to have so many from districts, and it's, it may be difficult to get a number of people from a particular district, central district, I think it's been low, in getting people to apply for the various boards and so forth, you know? And it's hard, it's hard to tell someone who's worked on a board for many years, okay, hey, we're going to rotate you off this time, we're going to put someone on there who wants to, wants to serve, has not done it before, and they've done a really good job, you know? But there is, there is sometimes an advantage to having some new blood, blood on the board, but, you know, the point that Buddy brings up is a valid one. What do you do if, when you put the term limit there, and then there's not enough applicants to do it, you know? I would like to see the applicant list, you know, nice and fit, before we go too far in setting the term limits. I, I like, I like Tracy, I think a couple of consecutive terms is a good thing, as long as we have a backlog of, of people who want to serve on the boards, and then if the people who come off after a couple of consecutive terms want to stay there, that we can put them back on the next time or something, you know, or when someone else comes off, but.
I think we have a habit of ignoring, maybe in a lot of cases, new applicants that are in the board bank for the first or second time, and we see their names, because we're hesitant about replacing somebody who's been serving a long time, and we're not giving new people a chance. And I think some people recognize that, and they say, what, what the heck, you know, we're never going to get on that board, you know, it's something we wanted, the planning commission, or the wetlands, or whatever, we think we could do a good job there, but, you know, they're going to keep Gene Hunt in the same job forever. I mean, so why bother, why bother applying anymore, and they drop off?
I think we've seen that in the recent past, where we've had some new people apply for the board for the very first time, and they have a lot of interest, and they were hoping they were going to get on this one, or they were going to get on this one, and they've not gotten on any of them, and then they may lose interest, you know? I know at least one or two cases where we called the person to get on a board, and they had lost interest because they had been there so long, they just lost interest and not been selected for it.
Well, I think it's human nature that we, you know, we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings with things.
That's it.
And most of the time, every one of the members that we see that are eligible for reappointment have done a good job, you know? So it's, it's very difficult for council to, to do that. I'm kind of leery about assigning any term limits when we don't have a term limit, so I-
We don't have term limits every four years.
Well, that's, that's, that's not a limit, that's a, you're re-elected every four years, but just like the, the president has a, a two-term limit, school board actually has a two-term limit, and has a, and by default has a rotating chairman because of that. Now, that's state law. What I would say is that, what I would like to see us do, I, I think the one thing that we can do, because I don't think anybody in here is going to say, no, we, we need to have a two-term limit, and then you're, you're off. But I would like to see us rotate chairman. You know, that, just the rotating of the chairman itself, no matter what board you're on, actually brings new vigor to, to anybody. So, I mean, that's the one thing I think that maybe we could all agree on, maybe I'm, maybe I'm incorrect about that, but-
Judy had a point, when she was talking about the, the various boards there, and the fact that, you know, some boards, you know, if you have a new chairman, it may revitalize the way that board, commission, you know, works, I mean, with, with new sets of rules perhaps, or new guidelines, or whatever, so.
And some people would probably take that. And the other thing is, I would like to see us use the boards more as a pipeline, I guess. There's some boards that, that you're absolutely correct, it's hard to fill certain spots on certain boards, but we always ask what boards they would want to participate on, and what you get are is the most, most popular boards. So I'm wondering if there's anything to be said to just putting a board bank application in, and, but you have to be open to a, to any board. And then we can start rotating them through, to try and build a pipeline. Just to me, you start, you start one place, and you, you come out at, you know, the school board, or whatever.
You look at Bill Smith, I mean, for example. Bill served on the, the BZA, the wetlands board, he went to the planning commission, and then he graduated to the school board.
Right.
I mean, I mean, and not necessarily, you know, a progression, but just that, you know, he found, he, he served wetlands, and he liked that, and he wanted to do something else, I believe. So he went on-
He wanted to do something different.
Yes. And he went on to do something else, and, you know, finally, he's on the school board for a second term. I mean, so I think that's a good idea, you know, to move, you know, if you can, whatever, move people through if they want to.
Well, again, I think the purpose of the night's meeting, and we've kind of got to move on, and, and to get on with the regular scheduled meeting, I, I guess what I would like to see everybody do is write down, you know, can we build a consensus just by everybody saying, okay, I'm good to rotate chairman, kind of come up with a series of questions. Do you want to, do you want term limits? We'll all answer independently, and then we'll summarize the results. Do you want to rotate chairman? And see where we can agree, and then we'll come back together on this and say, okay, with those, with that data, then we can say what would have to occur for, for the particular set of circumstances to take off. Is that okay?
Bye.
Trace?
So we'll come back to this after Judy individually polled us?
Yeah, I think Judy can come up with just a standard set of questions, a poll each one of us, and see where we agree, where we disagree, and maybe we can at least take care of the things that we agree on, and that'll make a positive change and positive difference. Okay?
We can do that.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, Gene, in the past, we don't, we don't have a policy about board reports, but I know in the past, when I, like I was on the Thomas Nelson Community College Board, there was a policy in place that once a year, I came to city council and said, here's what's going on at Thomas Nelson Community College. And we sort of gotten away from that. We, we don't, we don't keep track of some of those, I guess more distance boards, like social service board, or community health board, where we don't get a regular briefing from those board members. They're not necessarily board members that come through our charter, but they're board members that we are required to appoint to support either some regional endeavor or something of that nature. And maybe you also want to consider whether or not there should be some regular report process back to city council for some of these board members.
And when the right time to, to do something like that.
When's the right time to do it, how frequently it ought to be, that type of thing.
Okay.
Because some of those are on like a two-year term limit, I think, wasn't Thomas Nelson?
Two, two, two terms.
Two, two, three-year term, right?
Two, three-year terms, and that was it. Where others, Colonial Health or whatever is unlimited, right?
I think so.
I think so? Some of the other ones, you know?
That's a, that's a very good point, Wayne, and I, we can do that just at the start of every meeting, just get the board report from a different board membership as we go through the year. It's just more of a matter of when's the best time for each board, if y'all can draw up some type of proposed briefing.
Particularly like social services, where we have a huge involvement with social services and a huge amount of money-
They're going to want to talk to us at budget time.
Going into that board, but, yeah, we don't get, we don't get any updates on what's going on.
Agreed. Okay, sounds good. Thanks. We'll open the regular session in about five minutes.